It looks like Deb is trying to get, oh, there's Steve connecting. Just for those waiting.
Alright, alright, alright. The host has removed me from this meeting, Deb.
No, you're still there, Steve.
I can see you, Steve.
Okay.
I think you're fine.
Okay.
Yeah, you're fine.
Trying to fire up, so I disconnected that one.
Oh, okay, I see, okay. Yeah, cuz down there I can see everybody on here, I can't see everybody.
Oh, if you want, sorry, I didn't realize that, I can leave that going if you'd like.
Yeah, cuz on here I just see, just see you then mostly, or who's ever speaking, so. But, see, that's why I don't know who's all here, we got everybody here?
Oh, yeah, we do.
Alright, so we wanna, uh, call the meeting to order then, everybody ready?
Ready.
Yep.
Jim.
Ron, ready.
Levi and Ronnie. And Rod, you there?
I am there, Steve.
Rod's here, Bart?
Yes, sir.
We got Bart, okay. Alright, so, uh, we'll call the meeting to order. And, uh, make sure I do this right, Deb, the first thing we have is, uh, a public hearing for the maximum levy of budget certification of taxes. And, uh, is there any questions or concerns about that, it was published in the paper, if anybody has any questions or concerns?
What is that for?
This is for the public hearing for maximum levy for budget certification of taxes.
Okay.
It's a new requirement that started last year. We have to hold an extra public hearing to certify the maximum amount that we can certify for taxes, and that amount is two hundred sixty-two thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars. And it was an increase of one point nine eight percent.
Okay. If no one is here to speak to that, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm second.
Motion second by Jim. All in favor? The, uh, Jim?
Aye.
Aye. Levi?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Rod?
Aye.
And Bart?
Aye.
Okay, and everybody, uh, so the motion carries here, and, uh, we have the approval of the agenda. Did everybody get a copy of the agenda, I take it? So I have approval.
It's Rod, I'll make a motion.
Rod makes a motion.
Ron now seconding.
And Ron seconds. And Jim?
Aye.
Levi?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Rod?
Aye.
And Bart?
Aye.
Okay. And we all got a copy of the, uh, minutes from the last meeting, we have approval or corrections of the minutes? Anybody make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Levi?
Yeah, I'm second.
And Jim? And we'll vote on it here, Jim?
Aye.
Levi?
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Rod?
Aye.
And Bart?
Aye.
Okay, so the minutes are approved. And visitors, we have from the Main Street Project Director, Kim Akers, are you there, Kim?
I am, good evening. And I do also have a couple of board members here with me this evening, Jamie Willhow and Lisa Dirks, just in case anyone has any questions of them. Um, and I just, uh, I would like to go forward with, um, asking the, um, city council to reconsider their decision to not fund us for the fiscal year twenty-two. I have to, I have to admit, and when I looked in the paper and saw that we had not received, that we, that had been, we'd been voted out, that I was really shocked. Um, in the sixteen months that I've been the director, I've come and submitted a report every month and been available to answer questions, and I've never been asked anything and never been given the impression that anybody had, um, had any, uh, that anyone who was displeased with my job or with the activities, with the, um, performance of Main Street. And so it, it just came as a shock. It has gotten back to me that there has been talk about a few reasons behind that, and I'd like to address a few of those. Um, I was told that the city feels that it hasn't gotten its money's worth from the Main Street program. And, um, I would just like to ask what is meant by that. We have, since we, um, since our inception in August of twenty-seventeen, we have been solely responsible for organizing all of the downtown events, which would include the Easter, farmer's market, fall and Christmas, cleanup nights, um, taking care of all the seasonal decorating, handled all volunteer recruitment to get those activities done, and made every effort that we can, uh, to provoke, to promote the businesses downtown and get the community to come downtown to hang out. Um, so I'm just curious as to what the city's expectations are outside of that. Um, I've also been told that the city should not support the program because the businesses don't support the program, and that the community is not behind it, but I counted up eighteen businesses earlier today who have given financial support recently, and heard from others that they plan to give financial support when they are financially ready to do so, um, you know, outside of pandemic concerns and um, businesses just haven't been doing as well lately. And then also I've received several donations from individuals, um, who have given support and some who didn't give support in the beginning and have decided to support now because they like what we're doing. And I also received frequent compliments from the community on what's going on downtown and how things are looking and the energy and activity that's been happening downtown. Um, another, something else that's gotten back to me is that, um, some people feel that only the middle of the downtown is included in our activities. Um, but I can honestly say that I've made every effort possible to include all of the businesses in our programs' activities. And it is a constant struggle when you have some businesses that are on one, all the way on one end, some are on the other, some have houses in between. It is hard to include everybody and everything that's a walking activity, but we're doing our best to include anyone we can and have always asked them to help us with solutions to get that done. Have always been open to talking to them about it. Um, another reason I was told is that the, uh, city no longer feels the need to support us is that I have resigned. Um, I do have to say, yes, I did, um, but those, it's, I have resigned because of my, my, uh, because of me, it's all personal. Um, I, I want to open a store on my property. Um, not only was my building destroyed by the derailment, but I have health issues and family issues that combined to make my energy levels just too low to handle a job and another job, and so, and I've chosen to pursue my dreams in that area. I, um, have given ample notice to find somebody new, I don't have any plans to leave before the middle of April and would stay longer if that's needed as well, I don't plan to leave the program without any leadership and direction. Um, another reason that I have heard is that Jamie Willhow and Marcia Seering are the only ones that are benefiting from the program. Um, that they are the only ones receiving any grant money and that they have been gotten lots of grant money. Um, I am constantly asked about the grant that they received for the, um, event center that they opened up. Um, and I know personally, because I was the Economic Vitality Chairperson for Main Street, when that grant was made available, I delivered information to each and every building owner downtown who's building qualified for that grant, and none of them chose to apply for it. So, no, they are, and I've also heard that that money was supposed to be divided between all the businesses downtown, and that was not true, and the city, of course, should know that because the city actually had to make application on that grant, and you know that we were only allowed to submit one project. That grant also was not even a Main Street grant, it was technically an Iowa Economic Development Authority grant, and had, it had, you know, they're interrelated with Main Street Iowa, but it's not, it, it's not administered through Main Street Iowa even. And I can honestly say from my experience with Jamie and Marcia that they aren't receiving anything, they receive compensation for nothing, and they have volunteered tons of their own time. So anything that is going around rumors that way just or simply not true. Um, and there's other things that have gotten back and around to me, I dispel any rumors as soon as I can, but I can honestly say that the Clarence Main Street program has done its very best to be inclusive of everyone and to do our absolute best to, just to get the community downtown as a place to hang out. Um, to, since I've never answered any questions, I'm just gonna answer a few that you might be thinking of. As far as the money that Main Street receives, um, in order of amounts, um, the money gets doled out as follows, my wages come first, rent and supplies for the program office, community activity budgets and dues to Main Street America. If anybody is interested into, in a full description of my job, I'm happy to share it. Um, I am paid sixteen dollars an hour with no benefits for a maximum of twenty-five hours a week. Maximum gross ends up at top would be like nineteen thousand a year, so I'm not getting rich on this program. Um, and I don't get any paid time off, so if I go on vacation, I don't get paid for it. I also volunteer from fifteen to twenty-five hours per month of my own personal time so that I volunteer as much as I ask others to volunteer. Um, Main Street Iowa also requires to remain in their program a meaningful co- financial con- contribution from the city. They also require a city of our size to maintain a budget amount of thirty-five thousand dollars to stay in the program. So, if the city does not fund us anymore, we will get bumped out of the program. Um, it was an honor to get included in that program. Um, Jamie, Willhow, Jen Van Orte, and Marcia Seering put lots of effort in making sure that we could get into that program. And to get bumped out would be quite the kick in the teeth, um, to them, and you can't just get back in, once you're out, you have to completely reapply again to get back in. Um, why do I think we need to stay in the Main Street program? Um, things have changed over the course of the years, things don't work the same as they used to. Even small towns need some kind of a chamber of commerce, an economic development group, or a dedicated entity of some kind, some kind, to keep their downtowns thriving, and a place the community wants to gather. Main Street Iowa provides us with a really, when you look at it, relatively low-cost template that has proven to work to revitalize small towns. It used to be that the movers and shakers in a community, the city leaders, the bank presidents, those types of people would all, church leaders would all get together and just make things happen in a community this size. It just, it's not the way that it works anymore. And if you don't have some kind of entity that is dedicated to organizing the volunteers, to make your events happen, who's gonna do it? Um, five years ago, there was nothing going on in Clarence, and now there is a lot going on, and it is because of the Clarence Main Street Program Board and volunteers. When I tell people from other towns in our area what I do, I frequently hear there's so much going on in Clarence and you are so lucky to have so much support there. I wish we had that in my town. And I hear that multiple places I go. I also know of two businesses who would like to relocate in Clarence if there were, you know, when there's a good spot for them to go because of the support that they see happening here. Uh, another thing, um, that ten thousand dollar gift that I told you about, um, that we're working on a grant program to dole that out to the, uh, downtown community, that was given to us because that donor saw what was going on downtown, and she called Clarence Main Street to find out the best way to give that money out, she didn't call anybody else. So I really, really, really would like you to reconsider, um, so that we can keep things happening in our downtown. Um, even if you do choose not to fund us again, um, technically, we are still, you're still, uh, our partner, I guess, until your fiscal year, um, ends in July. Um, we do have a, a representative coming from Main Street Iowa on February twenty-fourth, um, who would like to sit down and talk with as many of you as she could. So if I could get you nailed down tonight on a time when that would work out, I would sure appreciate it, that's on a Wednesday. Um, I also have my little report from our activities in January and February. Um, I have distributed information to all of our qualifying businesses. About the
You're cutting out here.
Do on March third. Committee term and has to gift specifically.
Is Kim cutting?
Yeah, I got, she is cutting out. We didn't get any.
Alright, I'm reading my report now, and you actually have that.
Now I can hear you fine.
Oh, interesting, okay. Um, I have put everything together to install a sign at the Raymond Conrad Park for the Lincoln Highway Scenic Byway Passport Program. Um, obviously, the weather is not conducive to getting that in the ground right now, so I'll get that done as soon as I can. Um, projects that we are working on, um, the design committee has purchased more vintage chairs for the bench project downtown and is having them all sandblasted and powder coated so that they will weather better. And they have purchased more to expand that. Um, the Economic Vitality Committee has made some progress on collecting pictures and information about our downtown buildings and is continuing the task of putting together an inventory book that'll be accessible to anyone to look through. Uh, the Promotion Committee has started planning for the Easter event. The Outreach Committee is working on getting together with the North Cedar High School on a program to encourage more young people to get involved in volunteering. Um, and then I do need to, um, get the council to, um, decide on a time when they can meet with, uh, Darlene Strachan from Main Street Iowa on February twenty-fourth. Thank you, do you have any questions for me or either of my board members?
Um, you say you got eighteen businesses included in your Main Street project, and that is eighteen out of, uh, how many that you don't have? That are not in the program, do you have any idea?
Well, nobody's in the program, I was just letting you know that I do have a significant number of businesses who are supportive of it.
Who have donated in.
Who have actually donated financially in some way. So to say that the other businesses aren't supportive, I wouldn't, uh, nobody has told me they're not supportive of us. They just have not all financially donated, does that make sense?
Okay, I got you, so you got, you got some that are donators and some that are not.
And some that aren't. Yeah, and some are not even in the Main Street District, we have, we get donations from all over.
Right, right, um, you, you, uh, Kim, and I can tell by the, uh, uh, what do you say, the tone of your voice, maybe you're a little bit disappointed in the decision, and I can understand that. As a council here, we had voted to, um, do away with our funding, and as you said, it is an honor to be included into the Main Street project. And, uh, I don't know what everybody else's thinking is on this, but I think as a council, we maybe need to reconsider. And, um, whether we do a one-year or, um, or whatever, um, I don't know, what's everybody's feelings on this, do we want to, um, support uh, the Main Street project, or what's everybody's feelings?
Well, Jim, I'll, I'll, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to say a couple of things. Uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we were informed at the last council meeting, not at the budget session, but the last council meeting, we were under the impression, or we were informed that the director was resigning and the treasurer was resigning. I don't know anything about all these other rumors, and I don't pay any attention to rumors, I've been, been in this kind of business long enough to know better. But I do know I wasn't going to make a motion to continue if we weren't going to have a director and a treasurer. And there was never any time that we were ever advised in a council meeting that somebody was resigning. So, this is, and I'm, I know I'm gonna have to repeat myself, that this is why I always say that all department heads need to come to a budget. So that miscommunication doesn't happen. And if someone, if, if Kim is gonna resign for the reasons I understand, but we need to know, and we need to know whether or not there's gonna be a new director, whether it's gonna be a new treasurer before we commit any kind of taxpayer money. And I, that's just common sense. I don't have any problem, basically, with Main Street. What I do have a problem with is saying a bunch of rumors that I don't even know anything about. And the fact is that Kim is resigning, and that was never reported to the council other than the mayor telling us the last council meeting. So, that's why I personally was not going to make a motion or to ask that it be in the budget, because I assumed since there is not gonna be a director, or we didn't know there was gonna be a director or treasurer, you're not gonna give tax dollars. So, that's my, that's my point of view.
Well, uh, Jim, we know right now, tonight, that Kim said, if I'm right on this, Kim, and that you won't step down until you have somebody in place, is that correct?
That is correct.
We have done advertising for a new director, we have received one resume, we haven't actually done any interviewing, because we would like to have more than one candidate when we do that. Our treasurer has been our treasurer since the beginning of Main Street, so she's going on her fifth year, I mean, she's done four years. And it's not that she doesn't want to continue doing the job, but she feels like it, it needs a new set of eyes. She's done the treasurer's job, someone else should step in, maybe decide if there's ways that we should be doing things a little bit differently when it comes to all of her, um, spreadsheets, and so, you know, she is willing to stay on too though, until we find a board member that wants to step up to be the treasurer. Julia has stated that she will not leave us without a treasurer as well. Yeah. She will stay until we find someone to take her spot. And we are looking actively for more board members, because we have lost a few over the, the four years that we've been um, aboard, and so we are looking to replace some board members. I'm sure that everyone can understand, though, it is hard to find volunteers, people, it's hard to say yes to something that doesn't pay you anything. So, so it's an active, you know, we're, we're in process of trying to find others to fill those roles. Um, and this, Kim was our third director, so we're actually looking for our fourth. But I would not say we're any different than any other Main Street, um, it's a pretty high turnover rate because it is a lot of work for twenty-five hours a week. I mean, it's just the fact of, uh, we can't pay someone for forty hours, I mean, we know we can't, um, but most people, you know, forty hours is what most people want for a job, so it's not an easy position to fill. Um, it's, it does take a little bit, so.
So we know we are. So we know we are going to have a director and a treasurer.
Yes.
Until a replacement is found.
Correct.
That is good.
When we hired Kim, we had three people apply. So I'm hoping that our odds will be again, that we'll have at least three maybe candidates so that we can pick the best, the best one to fit this position.
Okay, anybody else get any feelings on this?
I, I guess I'll chime in a little bit. So certainly, Kim, I want to make sure you, you understand this, that it wasn't a reflection on the performance of you as an individual as to why the, the city didn't fund it. It was more of, you know, is the burden of Main Street worth, worth the $10,000? Meaning if we went back to like an economic development group or something like that, would we see more improvement to the accounting? Like, I think, I think we as a council are certainly for improvement throughout the city and $10,000 seems like an appropriate value. It's just, does that value make sense to pay, you know, a salary for an individual versus maybe getting volunteers, going back to an economic development and those kinds of things? That's really where.
Well, my answer to that would be, you have that and they are completely, they, I mean, they still exist, but they're completely inactive.
Right, but majority of the volunteers that are participating, that participate in that went over to the Main Street program.
Yes. I think what I feel the necessary, I talked with Kim about this when she resigned. But it does make, if you have someone that you're actually paying, that every day they're, they're doing something towards this program, it keeps us all moving. When you don't have that, it's hard to keep a group going. It gets to a point where we're all the same volunteers and, you know, we, we try, but we've got other things we're doing too. So I think it may, I do believe it makes a difference having a paid person in charge of the organization. I do think that is part of why we have been able to be as active as we are. And even though it's not all seen here in Clarence as to what has happened or what other towns see us as, I think you'd be amazed because it's like Kim said, we go to things and people say, oh my gosh, you guys are doing so much. So for a town of 900 or 1,000, whatever we're at right now, I, I think we've done incredible things, but I think it's because we've had a program and we have had the support of the Main Street.
Okay, um, let me ask you this. If we went with a lesser amount, would that be okay? And we could remain in the Main Street project?
Technically yes, but that would be difficult because we don't have huge business sponsors in our town, as a lot of people do. Like there's no Hy-Vee, there's no Riverboat sending, giving us money. It would be very difficult for us to make up the difference in the budget shortfall that we need to have without the full $10,000.
And I will say, it's really hard right now for our small businesses to feel it, they're able to support. I, I will say, I run a small business and I know the feelings. COVID has definitely ravaged how, how well you can make money in a small business. And so I don't know if we could push that off to any of our other businesses. It's just been a hard year.
I agree with you there, Jamie. It has been a tough year. You know, you being in the restaurant business knows probably better than anybody. So I don't know what, what is?
My, my general feeling really isn't about the amount. I, you know, $10,000 seems like an appropriate amount. I'd like to see $10,000 go straight into grants that go right to businesses rather into, rather than into a, a salary for an employee to Main Street, maintain a relationship with the Main Street program.
Are you going to have enough money to pay a director? You know, if you're, you're talking.
Who's going to administer that?
Economic Development Volunteers.
I just think if we lose the program, it's going to be hard to keep everything moving like it has. I think you're going to lose. I, I mean, there, we do meet as a board every month. We do make decisions every month. We do have committees that meet every month. I think if you, if you take that away, we just.
Sorry, Rod was talking. I muted him.
So I, I just.
All right, so. What's everybody's, anybody else get any feelings on this? So Bart, Ron, Rod? We've heard from Jim, we've heard from, from Levi, we've heard from Kim. We know where Kim stands. We know where Jamie stands on this. Do we want to reconsider this program or what do we want to do? And if we did it, would we do it? See, last time they, it was a three-year deal. We don't have to do a three-year deal again, do we?
No, you do not.
So.
That was only when we started the program, we had to have three-year commitments. So the Main Street knew that we would be able to survive for three years. Now we've been in it three years. Actually, it's our fifth year we're starting. We don't have to have a commitment for extended time.
Okay. What, what do you guys think? Levi, are you still against it then, or are you reconsidering or where do you stand?
I guess my takeaway is this, is that, you know, if we would go to a year, so commit to this year and see, see if we get the director place to see how, you know, see the things that come out of the program, see if we get some more businesses to contribute, I mean, you know, in a, a financial way. Then, I mean, I'd be for that. I just think we can review it then at a yearly basis.
I agree. Everybody else, what do you think?
Well, Jim, that's, that's, that's my whole point. I, I think a year is probably a good idea. I also think though, we need to stay away from these foolish rumors. It, it serves no purpose. We do, we just simply need to do business. That's why we have budget hearings. We need to have a procedure and everybody follow that procedure. And department heads need to come to budget hearings and give their case.
So would I be considered a department head?
You would be, you're a director.
Because I was literally told that I did not need to come to that meeting and I was actually told.
I never told you that.
Well, I know you didn't, but I was mistakenly told that, and we've never come to one of those meetings before and it's never come up as an issue before. And that's all I'm trying to say. I, I do have a right to defend myself.
Well, nobody's accusing you of any. That's, that's the whole point. The only, the only people that's getting accused is, is supposedly these people, a rumor that this is being said, rumors that's being said, that's not evidence. That's not even a, you're not even able to name an individual to say Jim Barber said, said this and Jim Barber said that. That's not the way you do business.
You can't go by rumors.
No, you can't go by rumors.
And you're always going to have, you're never going to get away from them.
No.
And this is what I like.
To do business.
You see this thing?
No, and I understand that, but I was told that that was actually part of the discussion at the last meeting and so I just wanted to respond to tho, that discussion. I tried to go to see if I could see a recording of that meeting. I wasn't able to do so. Yes, I should have been there, but I didn't know that I was supposed to be there. I was actually told that it was a council-only meeting. I was mistakenly told that. Um, but it was an honest mistake by the person who told me. Um, I was told to just send an email to Deb, I'm asking to be put on the budget and which is what I did. So I, outside of that, I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, the budget.
But if those things were discussed at the meeting, which I told, I was told that they were, I do have a right to respond to that.
Um, the budget meeting is an open forum.
Now I know that.
One thing I would like to say is, is, I was at the Main Street project meeting, went to your meeting and I don't know if you can see this, this was given to me. You see, and I, and I took the time to read it and I don't know how many people get these that don't take the time to read them. And I did, and I was impressed with some of the things you guys do, like farmer's market. I didn't know that, that was Main Street project. I didn't know that who, who was doing it. But I think as a council, we should do a one-year deal and evaluate it at our budget meeting, whether we are getting our money's worth. And I think we ought to make the $10,000 donation to Main Street project. That's just my thoughts. You guys decide whatever you guys think.
Jim, I, I think that's probably the best recommendation that we've heard. And I'll make the motion as long as it doesn't cause Deb any problems with the budget.
All right, so we got a motion. Can we do this tonight?
I don't know. Ask.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Is, is it going to cause any issues, Deb?
No, it'll be a simple fix. I can just add that to the budget.
Okay, well then I, my motion is made then.
Okay.
10,000 for one year.
One year for $10,000. So a motion by Jim, we have a second.
I'll second it, Levi.
Levi? And Bart?
Hi.
Rod?
Hi.
Ron?
Hi.
Levi?
Hi.
And Jim?
Hi.
So the motion carries that we will make a $10,000 for one year to the Main Street project.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your support.
We really do appreciate it. Thank you for hearing us out.
And, and we would love for when Darlene Strachan comes, for all of you to be involved so you can ask the Main Street questions as to why is it important that we're on it? I, I mean, I think that's a one, that would be a wonderful time for, for us to, you know, to hear what, why they think it's, it makes a difference to be on it. So if you guys could meet, that would be wonderful.
Anybody got any questions for Kim or Jamie then? All right.
Could we get some kind of a, I'm sorry, could we get some kind of a commitment on whether or not we would have a, a showing of, of council members if we set that meeting with Darlene on the 24th for a certain time?
Would it be during the day?
She's willing to meet in the evening, so we could do six o'clock again.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
All right, so Levi, and I'll see if I can make it.
Very much appreciate that.
And we'll, so anybody, anybody else have anything else for Kim? All right, well, thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Okay, and we have, next will be our utility billings hearings. We don't have any of them, I take it.
There were none this month, no.
And nuisance abatement hearings? We have none of them?
I have none of those either.
Okay. And old business, we have nuisance, nuisance abatement follow-up, if any, and I don't think we had any at the last meeting, did we?
I don't think there was any, was there? Rick?
Uh, no.
Okay. And next we'll have our discussion with ambulance coordinator Brittany Rogers. Brittany, are you there?
I am. Okay, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So for January, we had 16 calls for service and so far for February, we've had five, so we're doing pretty good. Our medical director Catherine Hurst was supposed to be joining us tonight so we could talk about where we're at on going to a paramedic level service, but unfortunately she's not able to attend. So we are looking at moving forward with the paramedic level service. We're hoping to get that accomplished and be paramedic level service in March. Our board for the ambulance has approved to buy all of the equipment, so it won't actually come out of our ambulance budget, which saves us a few thousand dollars, which is great right now. And then we're meeting with Jones Regional for our pharmacy contract, which will save us money on our medications going forward. Right now we use Boundary. The difference in cost, for example, for you is a medication that we use for diabetics called Glucagon. We pay $226 each time we buy that and that's with a discount through Boundary with Jones Regional, we'd pay $196 for it. So it's an extremely expensive medication, but it would save us some more being able to utilize the discount that the hospital gets because they buy in such large bulk. And then other medications are not that expensive. It's just that particular one is right up there. We currently have our EMT class going on on Monday and Wednesday nights that we host out at our ambulance station. We have 14 members in the class. Four of those will be joining our service as EMTs once they complete their education for that. And then in February, our ambulance department is going to be offering an OB class, which is a birthing class for members of the EMS community. It's something that's required every two years for education for us to renew our licenses. It's not something that you can usually get very often, so when it's, when someone has it and they open it up and have it available, people tend to jump in and try to get in the class. So because of COVID though, we have to limit the number of spots for other people outside of our service. So we do have some people that have said that they wanted to attend, so we'll be opening that up to other departments as well.
What kind of a class did you say that is?
An OB class, how to deliver a baby.
I thought you said birthing, but I wasn't sure.
Birthing, yep, birthing class. And then in March, we're going to be doing a pediatric skills training. This is hands-on skills for EMS community with live patients, which again, we don't get very often. So we're going to be joining with another department to do that, one that is close to us, Bennett Ambulance Service. So we're kind of excited about that, doing a joint training. And that actually is all that I have for you this time. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Sounds like you got a lot going on out there, Brittany, so.
Brittany, did you have new members that they needed to vote on?
Yes, I just don't remember which ones we needed. Do you have it written down?
Was it Morgan?
Yes, Morgan Benson, yes. She is a driver on our service. She's also an EMT in the class.
And then I am not able to recall the other person's name, but I think there was a man too.
Jeff, was it Jeff Myers? He's on the fire department, but he's also been driving for us for the ambulance. I think we just needed to switch him over and approve him on the ambulance side as well.
All right, so on those, the council needs to vote, you know, to add them to the service.
Okay, to add both of them, Jeff and Morgan? Do we have a motion? Is that what we want to do? Have a motion to approve the new hires?
It's Rod and I'll make a motion.
Rodney?
Jim, second.
Jim, second, okay. And we have to have a little vote here, so how about you, Bart?
Hi.
Rod?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Levi?
Hi.
And Jim?
Hi.
All right, motion carries. So Morgan Benson and Jeff Meyer are now part of our ambulance team, so good job. Anybody else have anything for Brittany?
I just have one, one more.
Go ahead.
Um, I remember who the other two people are. Uh, we needed Michelle and Greg Pierce.
What was the Michelle's last name?
Michelle.
Eker, I believe, is how you say it.
Okay. And what was the other one's name?
Greg Pierce.
Pierce?
P.I.E.R.C.E.
Okay, and they are, uh, drivers or gonna be EMTs?
Yeah, they're drivers, um, for our service. They're also in the EMT class. They are, theirs is being paid by a different service, though. They're on Stanwood Fire, so Stanwood Fire is paying for theirs.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion to, uh, approve, uh, Michelle and Greg too then?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. So, uh, anybody wanna entertain a motion to?
Rod will make a motion.
Ron is second.
And Ron second. Okay. And Bart?
Hi.
And Ronnie?
Hi.
Rod?
Hi.
Levi?
Hi.
And Jim?
Hi.
Okay, all right. Anything else for Brittany then? Anybody? All right, all right, all right. Uh, we'll move, move on to a discussion with library director Nikki Sheel. And I don't think Nikki's gonna be here tonight, is she, Deb?
No, Nikki sent an email today. Can I just read it? I know I sent it all to the council, but it says, I have a family thing come up and I'm not going to be able to attend tonight's meeting, so I wanted to get you a quick report on the library. The board approved the installation of a security system. Volunteer help was brought in to get an eight-camera system installed, which saved the library quite a bit of money. Her second point is, I'm working on securing possible grant funding to build out a children's play zone to encourage families with young children to utilize the library more frequently and to provide kids with a safe space to play while parents browse. And then the purchase of three new double-sided shelving units has been approved. These will be used to increase inventory and hopefully circulation. Expanding the library's collection is going to be an ongoing goal. That's all the major bullet points for last month. Let me know if there's anything else. So that's her librarian's report she submitted via email.
All right, all right, all right. Um, and the only other thing is, we have, uh, Jamie Wellhouse said that the library board voted to increase wages fifteen, fifteen hour for Nikki. So that's all we, uh, really have with that. And then, uh, we have a discussion with fire chief Randy Burke, and I think Randy's here tonight, is he?
Yeah, Randy's on. You're here right now, Randy, FYI. If you touch the screen, it should pop up and you'll see a microphone that you can press to unmute yourself, or I can ask to unmute you.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, don't have too much to report on. Um, all the officers, we had our elections in January. Uh, all the officers stayed the same. I as chief, Dennis Sanders is, uh, first assistant chief, Casey Sanders is second assistant and so forth. Um, one of the things I've been wanting to bring up for a while back, the duratio time, back when, in August there, when we had the storm. Um, Jim, we got Jim Droll to bring his tractor in for the water tower to run the, uh, generator. And the town paid for the fuel. Jim, Jim donated his hours on the tractor, so, uh, it, it's a pretty good. We, uh, probably ran for about three hours a day for that week, and he donated all of his, uh, tractor hours. Another one would be for Jeff Meyer. Don't had his skid loader in town here for that week, about forty hours on a skid loader. He donated his, his, uh, hours on a skid loader. And the last one would be Toby and Tyler Thurston. Toby had his, uh, Tyler Ron, his tonner for basically the whole week haul and brush out to the sewer plant. So just, uh, just so the council knows that the guys really did put it, put forth a lot of stuff. I think we had around four hundred and fifty hours of, uh, man-hours for the fire department for, that I gave to Steve for the FEMA deal. So.
Did you say four hundred and fifty?
It was approximately four hundred and fifty hours that I gave Steve for the FEMA deal, so.
Well, believe me there, Randy, uh, we appreciate the fire department's help during the duratio, cuz you guys, you guys stepped up and did a real, really good job. I mean, it wasn't just you guys, there was a lot of volunteers.
Oh, yeah.
On that, that, uh, stepped up, like you said, uh, you know, like I said, Jeff brought his skid steer to town and, uh, um, you know, and, and ever go unnoticed, believe me. So, and the only other thing I have for you is, and Randy and I talked about this, and, um, we talked at one time about, uh, needing a, um, fire hydrant out at the park. And I talked to Randy about this, and Randy said that, uh, he didn't think we would need this. And, uh, we're gonna build the, uh, new, uh, shelter there on the west end. And, uh, he said it wouldn't be a problem going from, uh, the current fire, fire hydrant on the cor- excuse me, on the corner of, uh, what would that be? Smith and, uh, First. So you'd be able to get all the water you needed there, right?
Yep. We got five hundred foot of, uh, large diameter hose on both pumper, so, uh, we can run water a long ways.
All right. Anybody got anything else for Randy?
Well, Jim, I got, I do have a question. I don't, maybe Randy can add, answer it, or the, these gentlemen that offer this um, material or, or machines to help us during the, during the storm. Is there, is there a way that that can be figured into the FEMA? So that they get reimbursed for that?
I, I actually had that on the spreadsheet for FEMA.
Okay.
Deb said that they couldn't use it, right, Deb?
It has to be a separate project. Um, it's not something we would get reimbursed financially for. It would go towards the city's share of the grant, which is ten percent of the grant will be the city's share.
Okay.
The volunteer hours go toward that somehow.
How's your, uh, new building coming there, Randy? They working this quarter on it?
Oh, we're at a slow spot right now with the, with the weather, the way it is. Um, gotta be talking with Schumacher this next week here. Hopefully we can get a line in there to do, uh, get the utilities in there. But, uh, anticipate things get rolling here in a couple of weeks. Um, usually when weather gets like this, it's tough working.
Yeah, I can understand that when zero degrees, uh, I can understand that. So anybody else have anything for Randy? All right. Thanks, Randy.
Okay, thank you.
And now we got a discussion with police chief Rick Scott. You there, Rick?
Yep.
All right.
I submitted my, uh, monthly report to you guys. Do you guys, if you guys don't have it, or if you have any questions, let me know. I'll be more happy to answer them for you. Um, also, I'd just like to talk to you guys a little bit about, um, an issue that I think that's, uh, that's is gonna cause some problems is, uh, is Lombard and Seventh Street. Um, we've had some accidents down there. Um, I just, I guess I don't know what you guys would like to do. Um, the cars seem to be coming out to the intersection to, to see around the corner to, to go. And if there's, if there's a car parked there near the corner is where we're having the problems at. I don't know if you guys would like to make that, uh, that one spot of no parking, or I'd, I'd hate to interfere with the businesses down there. Um, but it is quite, it is a problem.
Yeah, we have one spot right now that is blocked off. And what you're saying is you want another spot to the west blocked off.
Well, I'd like to, but like I said, I, I don't wanna, um, it's, it's a problem, but I, again, I don't wanna, I want the businesses to have parking too. I don't know if there's something we can do or, or how we can go about that.
Roundabout.
Move, move the building back. What's everybody's feelings on this?
This is Ron. We've talked about this ever since I've been on the council. And long before that, we talked about putting a flashing light up, but, uh, that involves quite a bit of uh, process to do that too. I guess we, like you say, we blocked off that first parking spot there, hoping that would help. And, uh, I don't know, it's, it's been an ongoing problem for years, so.
You, I can, uh, I guess I can do some studies on it and get back to you guys and what I, what I found out, if you'd like. I mean, it's sort of up to you. I just think it's a pretty dangerous intersection.
It is, it is a dangerous intersection, and we've always gotten pretty lucky, I guess you would say, with, we haven't had any really bad accidents there. I think we've had a few bad, not saying that that it, that it can't happen, but it can happen anywhere, I guess. But, uh, um, you know, the businesses you have there. Um, I don't, I don't know. I mean, I, I myself, um, I could see it where we could take another spot, but then it's gonna, like I said, take away a little bit from the business. Maybe a little bit, another twenty feet, maybe. I don't know. What's everybody else's, uh, feelings on this? You got any feelings on it there? I, I I'll ask you, Bart, but I, I think, I think it's probably better off if I don't, right?
I agree.
Yeah. So, um, Rod, Levi, you guys, what, what's your opinions on this?
Well, I mean, we, I mean, we only have really one way of dealing with it. We just gotta decide if we're willing to go that way. I mean, we have to basically make more no mark, no parking down there. I mean, I think that's the only option we've got. I mean, if we try to put a light up or something, we have to deal with the state since that's essentially Highway thirty, so, I mean, that really is our only choice. So we just have to decide if that's something we wanna do or, or not do. I think we've largely said that we don't wanna affect the businesses. And that's kind of the path we've taken, but.
A light isn't an option, I don't think.
No, it's not. So then really, it's no parking is the only other, other real option we got.
Well, it
My takeaway is make a recommendation based on some, based on some studies and some data. I mean, it's, it's always been a dangerous intersection, but it's also tough to put a business at, at risk.
Why don't we do it this way? Why don't we, uh, have Rick do kind of, uh, study and, um, we'll see, um, what he comes up with and maybe at the next council meeting have recommendations or whatever.
Okay. Sounds good. Can do that.
Are there any other options, Rick? I mean, I, I couldn't think of anything besides making them no, more no parking, but maybe there's more.
Yeah, I just, uh, I think that was the only idea I kinda had, but like you said, I didn't wanna I just don't, I, you know, the business is like the heart of the town, and you, I just don't wanna put them in a thing where, while their customers don't know where to park. Um, maybe it's just in the winter time. I, I don't know. Um.
Well, thought I had, and take it with a grain of salt, but the times that I pull up to that intersection and really notice it's a problem is when somebody's got their, their truck parked there. Could you make it car only for the first two spots? You know, the little cars parked there, you can still see to the west pretty well, but when it's a, you know, Chevy Silverado or whatever, it gets tough. So I don't know, maybe that'd be good for the business, cuz you're not losing the spot, but, you know, just make it car only.
Yeah, you're right, Kyle. That's, you, if you got a car there, it's, it doesn't seem, it's not as big a problem. Um, but how do you say that, uh, that you can't park a pickup there? Who would know that? You know what I'm saying?
Well, if you took that sign and I mean, it, it says no parking on that first spot and do, you know, car only like they do at the, at the mall or parking garages where it says compact car spot only or whatever. Yeah, I don't know. You don't ticket them when they park a truck there, but at the same time, you might deter people half the time.
You got a good point.
That's actually not a bad, a, a, a bad idea, Kyle. It's a pretty good compromise. It doesn't lose the parking, but at least deals with the real issue. I don't know. I think maybe we just go with what you originally said, though, Steve. Let, let Rick go off, figure out what he, what he thinks, and then come back with at least some kind of recommendation.
Okay.
This is Ron, and I think that is a good idea, cuz like you say, you can see around the car, a pickup makes it really tough there.
And, and the Jim, and the other spot, no parking spot, would that, would that be the same there? Could a person park a car there but not a pickup truck?
That's maybe what Rick could look into, you know, I don't you know, if you kinda parked your car there, your squad car, and stand back where you'd pull up to the intersection and see what it looks like, you know, maybe you'd have a better feel.
Sure.
But I guess my question, is there another, there's, is there a no parking place there on, on somewhere in, in that area?
Yeah, Brian, it was probably this summer, but Brian put up one no parking spot at the furthest spot to the east in front of Victory Lane.
Okay. And so that's, that's, that's what I'm asking. If, do you think if, if, uh, the chief went down there and just put his car there, is it possible that instead of losing that spot altogether, that a car would be okay, be, be in park there as well, where we could have both, both spots for cars only?
Yeah. I can go down there and, and look that over for you guys. That's a problem.
Okay. I think Kyle, Kyle's probably came up with the best solution on that.
Um, also, uh, um, the sheriff's department, uh, donated me a, uh, a laptop computer and a stand for the car. Uh, I'm going to have to figure out what, what it all needs. I mean, there's some stuff that I still needs, like the, the cords and stuff and the operating system, um, to see how much that's gonna um, be to get that up and going. Um, they deleted the, the hardware off it, so, um, I also, uh, there's a bid in front of you for sixty-eight, sixty-eight hundred dollars. And that was for a whole new complete system, which goes into your cars, so, and that's with everything. Uh, I would still have to buy a, uh, a scanner and a printer for the car. Um, what, 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 what that would do for me is it'd give me tracks and mock, which would correlate where, where I'm at all the time with the other officers. Um, for example, I had to, uh, use my phone um, during a high-speed chase here uh, last week, and I'd stop and program where they were last at, and then I'd go to that thing, and then it'd be clear up. And it also is a safety feature, like I talked to you guys before, that That if I was to stop a car on Oxford Junction Road at. At this address. And somebody'd go to that address and they say, well, I'm not there, but he, oh, there he's, he's over here. It's accurate within like three feet of where you, where you, where you're at. So it's a safety feature, plus you can do all your stuff right in the car. Um, that I have to like, like accidents, so I could do accidents out right in the car. Now I have to come back here and do them all. Print them out and stuff when I could just do it right there on the. In the scene and take me five, five, ten minutes at the most. So I put that in there as a one of uh. When we were talking about a new car to, if, if you do decide what you guys wanna do. I would put that in the new, new car. If I got, if, if we had money in the budget left for that. Um, that's a whole new complete system with a. With a, what they call a hotspot. Which runs off the internet, which your car is a, a hotspot anywhere you go. Um, so this one here, I'd have to, I'd have to go get a hotspot for this one here anyway to, just to run this one. So I'd have to get a hold of the phone company and see if they would. Be, would be able to uh get me a card or USL or wherever you guys get your cards from. But that's what that bid is for sixty-eight hundred. That, that first one, that mains, mainstay sixty-eight forty-two. So that's what it all, all entails.
Real quick, the. Is the laptop on here or is it just, is it just that rugged tablet?
It's a, it's, yeah, it's, that's everything. That's complete.
Well, the reason I'm asking that is you said that they donated a laptop and a stand and it sounds like it includes portions of that equipment.
That sheriff's off, the sheriff's office donated a Panasonic Toughbook to me. In a stand. Um, it's uh. I, they, they wiped it completely clean, so. I gotta put the stuff back on it and I, like I said, I gotta put like windows back on it. I believe uh tracks and mock. Um. Then I'm gonna have to buy some cords to hook it up with. Um.
Was, would, would that donation reduce this cost at all or is this in it? This cost is in addition to that?
No, this, this cost would be in addition to that, but if I could get that to work, I'd be more, I'd, I, we would have to buy the sixty-eight hundred dollars worth of stuff.
Okay, yeah, that's the question I'm asking.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's what I do. But I'd still have to have a hotspot for the car.
Uh, yeah, agreed, agreed.
And, and so the only thing I'm missing is a hotspot, a computer scanner and a, in a thermal printer. And that's, that's the only thing I need.
Is it, so is there, I guess maybe the real question is, is there a recommendation as the path you think is the, is the best path to take? Is it? Try to, try this donation to get it up and going, or is it to do the sixty-eight hundred?
Um. I don't know how much it's gonna take to get this other one going. That's, I mean, I'm all for saving money. Uh, it, it worked at one time and everybody's going to tablets. That's why they're going to. They shot me this. This is the same thing that the ambulance has in their, their rig. It's just, it's just a preference, I. You know, um. I'm gonna have to buy some pieces for this stand. For, for the Tahoe. If I wanna put it in our, in the Tahoe we got now, I'm gonna have to buy a. A bottom part of the stand. I do know that.
Okay, so it sounds to me like what I'm hearing from you is, is that the sixty-eight hundred really is the way to go?
Probably.
Okay.
So. Do we have to make a motion to have Rick go ahead and? Deb, do we have to make a motion to have Rick go ahead and? Get that, the sixty-eight hundred dollars?
Um. I don't know. I mean, he needs to get that right away.
No, I, I can, whenever you, you uh. Whenever, if you have to put it back on the, the agenda for a, for a vote.
I'm just hesitant to say yes because it wasn't on the agenda.
So. And I thought you guys did all that at. When it come to the police department and stuff, but I guess. I'm just not used to doing it that way. That's all right, though.
Rick, is there a way to find out how much that would cost by next council meeting?
Yep, I'm, I'll make some calls tomorrow.
Okay.
And uh. And you know, if it does save us money, great, you know, why would we use it?
Well, at least we would know by next council meeting.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
So I, I'd say we put it on, put it on the agenda for next council meeting. And then you'll know about this, whether it is gonna save us money or not.
Yeah, I will. I just got the stuff this, this, the other day. Uh, they brought it down, Warren, Warren gave it to me, so. I mean, they've been very, very, uh. Very helpful towards me and, and, and helped me out quite a bit, so. We have a good working relationship with them.
Good. All right. So is that all we have tonight then, Rick?
Well, I uh got you your stuff for you, if you wanted to uh. Look at the option of if you were gonna look at a new car. Um, you should have a packet on that. Uh, we were talking about leasing, leasing it or buying it or whatever you guys wanna do. Um, or if you wanted to do that or, or hold off. Um, the. The installation quote, there's some stuff that they quoted to install it would be. Um, that I can whittle that down, so. Um. The, so the installation quote that we got just to, to get the thing was seventeen thousand. That's to install the lights and, and the, the cage and the. R radio and. Um, I'll write a grant for the, the uh. The video. When, when it comes out. Um, and stuff like that. Um. The um. Main, uh, the car came up to thirty-six, thirty-six thousand. To buy the car, so you're looking thirty-six and seventeen. Is right at. What is that? About fifty-three thousand dollars.
And that was everything then, Rick, installed? Everything installed, everything that's ready, ready to go on the street at that price?
Yeah, well, the only thing we have to do is put graphics on it and the graphics, I can probably get them pretty, pretty reasonable. Um, I don't know if you guys use your graphic people, any graphic people here? In town, do you have people that do that stuff or? I always went to Rickards in my, in Lisbon. He, he, he did your, I think he did your last car. Your uh. The one you did, I got out here now. And that's prob, that's probably gonna run you probably about. Twelve hundred bucks probably. Give or take a few. I mean, I can get a bid on him, but other than that. It just, we, that's all you need. Yeah, thirty-six four one one one.
Okay. On the graphics deal, uh. I think uh. The guy downtown here, we'd wanna give him a chance.
Okay.
You know. To bet on the graphics to, you know, if we did, if we went that route, I think. I'd like to keep it local.
Sure.
You know, if we can, it brings it on price, you know?
Sure. Um, I don't know what you guys, what you guys wanna do about leasing versus buying it. Uh, I guess there's some loopholes and stuff that some people don't like, uh. Uh, it came up to uh. Come up to about the, the vehicle and stuff, the, about thirteen, about eleven hundred and fifty, fifty bucks I got. For forty-eight months, but then there's another bid for Ford, for it was thirteen hundred for. Forty-eight months. But. My, my thing, my thing is, is uh, then the, the other one is for a closed lease. For uh, including outfit. So if we, that was the minus seventeen thousand. So with the seventeen thousand to put it all together, it was thirteen seventy-eight eighty-three a month for forty-eight months. For a total of fifty-three, seven fourteen. And at the end of that, you can. Uh, buy it back, you can sell it for a dollar or buy it for a dollar. Or you can start over. Um. To understand this, something like this would not be a. Every five-year purchase would be, uh. This thing here would probably last you guys. Fifteen, twenty years. The last, the last one I had still had eighty thousand miles after twelve years, so. Um. You can also look at new cars, you know, your maintenance just goes down. Um. You have, you have dependable equipment. Um, it's just, just how you wanna go, you know, this is for a Chevy Tahoe. Uh, this is a four-wheel drive. Um, personally, I wouldn't have nothing but a four-wheel drive vehicle as a. As a police officer anymore. That's all I had, uh. We were the only ones that could really get out to the middle of a field with the. To, to an accident here a couple of weeks ago. Um, so. Yeah, I'm very uh. Admon about four-wheel drive vehicles and, and police things. I mean. They're not, they're not, no, they ain't built for speed, but they're built to go from point A to point B if you need to get somewhere.
Is uh. When you looked at this. Uh, was that the only thing they offered? Was the Chevy Tahoe or was there other?
Well, Carl Chevrolet does. Um. Ford offers the Ford Explorer. Which is an all-wheel drive, which a lot of, a lot of people have them. They also had a. Um, they had a pickup, a pickup. Um. They, they sold it. It was complete, outfitted and everything. Ready to go off the lot and it was forty, forty-eight. But they, they sold that to another thing. I mean, that's, they, they mostly deal in pickups and, and SUVs, but Ford deals in the Ford Explorers. And, and I don't know what the state bid is on a Ford Explorer. Um, the last one I bought was twenty-four thousand. That was the state bid. The, the Tahos are a little bigger. They've got more room. Um. You, I mean, you're, the, the only bad, the only bad thing when you see a Tahoe. And you know, people are gonna say, holy smokes. What the hell is this? Somebody driving around with a? Seventy thousand dollar vehicle. Well, you're, that vehicle didn't cost seventy thousand dollars. You, the state gets, or the, the cities get it at a very reduced price. That, that's, that's the state bid, so. So you get like forty thousand dollars off on that car.
I, I think.
What's that?
What, what we're looking for really is, is that we've got a certain amount of budget that we budgeted to the police department this year remaining. That we weren't gonna be able to spend. So from my perspective, it's really look into yourself, figure out what is the best option? Can we get it within that remaining budget we have this fiscal year so we can get it purchased this year and not put ourselves at risk for next year? I mean, I think really that's what we need.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, how much, how much you got, I guess, how much we got left that we can?
That I don't know.
And I can't say that either right this minute.
Okay.
But we can look into that.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I think ideally we really wanna get it in this fiscal year budget because we don't have, we hopefully would have to make a budget amendment.
Right, and you know, if you guys don't want, if you guys don't want this, I mean, you, we can always go to. The all-wheel drive Ford too, if you're looking for that too, so.
Uh, Jim, I, I say we find out how much money we do have and then go from there.
Okay. Yeah.
What I think that we need though is I think for next council meeting, it'd be ideal to figure out what budget do we have? Figure out what the total cost's going to be so that when we take a look at this, we understand here's our budget, here's the total cost of this outfit to the way you need it. And then we can make a decision. Ideally, it's under the total police budget that we've got remaining and we're all good to go. I'm not sure how realistic that is, but that was the original plan.
Right. Yeah, no problem.
Uh, do you wanna look into it, Rick, and see uh? Like I said, uh. Would, would you rather have a pickup or would you rather go with the Tahoe or?
Yes, it doesn't, it doesn't matter, just so, just so I can get from point A to point B. I, I'd assume uh something with uh. I can strap some, you know, load it up with some medical equipment and stuff. That's my biggest thing for, for cars and stuff. I, I like that kind of stuff where you can put medical equipment and. And ropes and stuff and a shovel maybe.
Good.
I definitely think he needs a four-wheel drive. I think this is Iowa and.
No question about that.
Yeah, I can.
So what you want to just kinda table this and look into the, uh, look into the budget and see how much we? Have remaining?
Right.
Budget, then we'll go from there.
Sure, you know, and like Levi said that, you know, if we only have this amount of much money and we wanna spend it. Then you know, that's, I mean, that's the way the dice rolls and we'll, we'll, we'll find something. I mean, I strictly understand that, so.
All right, anything else, Rick?
Uh, no, if, if uh, it's just been kinda busy the last few, few weeks, so. I'm sure when, once the uh, spring, the snow gets out of here, I'm sure I'll be busy with nuisance and abatements, so.
Okay, anything else? Anybody have anything for Rick?
One, one thing, just to make sure that we're clear, I think at the next council meeting. We'll need, I think, if the budget's lower than the total price, then something that falls within budget, but then I also think. Also bring forward the new Tahoe or whatever it is out, fully outfitted, so we can understand what will be the delta to get from. Remaining budget to, to that particular vehicle. That way we kinda have an option to choose whether we wanna go brand new or possibly used with. Within budget.
All right.
That way we can make a decision next time, cause I think we'll have to, to make a decision next time if we wanna get it spent this fiscal year.
True. Okay. No problem. All right, thank you.
That's it. Nobody need, has anything else for uh Rick, right? Okay, thanks, Rick. Um, so next we go to uh. Discussion with Pining and Zoning Administrator Steve Inz. You there, Steve?
I'm here.
All right.
Too much snow to build anything, so.
I'm thinking you're probably right. All right, so then with the public works, what do you have there? Anything?
Uh, we got our. New pump. We still haven't got it installed. Cause we've been busy moving snow and. What else? We got our shelving bought, got new computer bought. Which is amazingly faster than the old one. And. Other than that, we've been pushing a lot of snow and trying to. Open stuff up to keep it going, so.
Running out of place to put the snow, aren't we?
Yeah. Um. I don't know. What we need to do about the cemetery. I. Was out there today for like five and a half, six hours pushing snow out there with a skid loader. That thing gets drifted so bad. And if we don't keep it open, we're gonna get complaints, which we already have. So. I don't know what you guys' thoughts are on that, but. Yeah, it's, this, this is the second time I've been out there for. And honestly, I put like six hours in out there. Just opening up the roads out there. I don't, I don't know what the. Solution is to it, but. But to me, it's kinda ridiculous to. Pay me for six hours and. Take one bucket at a time and with a skid loader and.
Yeah, the only problem is if we have to uh. Have a funeral out there or something, you know, that comes, that could be a problem, so we have to do.
Right. But it's not only that, Steve, it's, I mean, we. Deb called one day and there was a lady stuck out there. She went out there to visit her husband's grave and. You know, there's, it gets used more than you know it does, so. But.
Can we outsource in certain cases? Meaning, like, when we get extreme snows like we're in the midst of right now? You know, just try to hire uh, someone to do it, to, to help us catch up. You know, really kinda your discretion, whether we think it makes sense or not, but I'd agree, I mean, spending eight hours out there yourself, I mean, when we could just have someone hire it done.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm a hundred percent for that. I mean, I. It, it'd probably be more reasonable than trying to buy a snow blower cuz that's really what. Would probably be the easiest way to handle that. Because those roads are so narrow and. I, yeah.
Steve, it's right. You could get a snow blower attachment for that Kubota, couldn't you? Wouldn't that help a lot?
We could, yeah. I mean, I. I've heard good and bad things about the attachments for the. Skid loaders, if you, if you go, you're gonna pay a lot of money to get a good one. I'll just say that. Cuz you can buy one for four thousand dollars and you're not gonna be happy with it, you're gonna spend probably nine grand. To get a good one. But. I mean. Then you gotta look at how often do we have winters like this? I think I heard that this is the worst one in twenty-five years, but here we are, so. Yeah, I don't know if it'd be cheaper to outsource it. Have somebody come in with a blower and just blow it or.
What's your feelings on it there, Steve? Do you think we'd be better off if we outsourced that? Just blow it out and uh. Go that route, or you think? If uh, we got an attachment for our skid steer, what's, what's your feelings on it? Would you, would you rather? Outsource it? I mean, uh. Just the way it seems. And uh. We've got plenty to do as far as moving snow, I mean.
Yeah.
That, even without the cemetery because.
First Avenue, first avenue's in the same boat, you know, it's.
Well, I think I've done twenty-six or twenty-seven hours here helping you guys out.
There you go.
And uh. It's just hard to keep up with it, you know, right now. I mean, clean downtown takes a while. You know, and the streets, the alleys and everything, and then you got cemetery besides, maybe we'd be better off to uh, look in, outsource and that.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that. I don't, I don't know if you could justify spending nine thousand dollars, I mean. How often do you have winters like we're having right now? You, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
If you bought one, it could sit in the shed for five years and not get used and. I. I don't know.
And I don't know if you'd get one uh. That you could use on First Avenue, would it even, would it even be big enough to blow that back on First Avenue or?
I honestly have never been around a blower on a skid loader, so I, I can't answer that. I, I don't know. Yeah, I. The problem with the cemetery is them roads are probably ten, maybe twelve foot wide. So you can only do so much, and then you gotta, you bank it up every time you clean it out, so it gets deeper and deeper every time, you know, it's. It's just a. Pain in my.
Well.
You know what?
We'd have to look into it and see uh. You know, who'd have a big enough blower to blow that out of there too, you know?
Yeah, I think, I think Wine Coop's got one on a tractor, I.
He's got one on his tractor and uh, it's a nice one, it's a big one. He's blew, he blew First Avenue out for us a few times, you know, and uh. Uh. It's a, it's a, it's a really good piece of equipment he's got, you know, so. Might be worth talking to Todd to see what. You know?
It wouldn't fit down the lanes.
What's that, Rod?
It would not fit down the lane out there at the cemetery, it's too wide.
His is too wide to go down those.
It's too big, Steve.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
I know he's got a snow blower attachment for his skid steer, but you cannot crowd it cuz the hydraulics won't handle it.
Right. That's what I've heard on a lot of them.
That's what happens, the hydraulic pump won't keep up.
Right.
So you're saying that his skid steer wouldn't be an option, Rod?
No, because like I say, if it gets too deep like that, I mean, the snow, it won't throw it far enough is the problem.
Okay. So we'd have to find somebody with a. Snow blower that is. Narrower than the one he has on his tractor.
Yes.
But the one he has on his skid steer. Is that right?
Yes, that's what you'd have to do, something in between there because that twin blade one's pretty big.
Okay.
Ronnie's seen it, he knows.
Uh, you're right on the skid loader ones too, Rod. And uh, Steve. The hydraulics should get hot on them. I mean, if you're blowing a little bit, they're fine, but if you gotta blow it very far, they don't work the best. You almost need one with augers on, that's only eight pro wide to, can get down those. I got one, but I don't know if I wanna volunteer to clean the cemetery now with it. Well, the big thing would be, we'd probably have, probably the best thing that could happen is we'd go out there and. Pin them roads good, because they're not marked real good right now. You know, before we even get into winter, just go out and. And they're, they're not straight. I mean. For the most part, they are, but they're not, so. Yeah, I'd, I'd say the most. Feasible way to handle it probably would be to outsource it. And. Like I said, who knows, you might not have, have to do that for the next five years. You know, we're, we're kinda in a winter like we had back in the seventies now and eighties, so.
Alright, well, I guess we just look into it and see if we can find somebody that's interested.
Yeah.
See what it would cost to have them blow that out. Then again, if you get it blown out. Can we blade it after that, you think? If it doesn't get, if we don't get, you know, smaller snows or, or are you just thinking about not blading it at all?
No, I think, I think we could blade it. I mean, you might have to. I, yeah, I think we can blade it. You might have to take some of it, scoop it away, you know what I mean? It's. I mean, right now, you could take the truck out there and probably keep it open now that it's opened up, but if we get another snow and wind. It, it's gonna be the same boat. So.
Yeah, I was out there, when was that? In December when we were blading. And I bladed the cemetery and it's, it's kinda hard to get around here. Like you said, the roads aren't straight. Um, it's hard to make the corners.
Right, yeah.
With, with the, with the blades, so. But, well, we just have to look into it and see if we can get somebody to blow that out. If it gets blown out good enough, then we can uh. You know, blade it ourselves after that, maybe unless we have trouble again, who knows? You know, we don't know what, what's gonna happen, so.
I think we've only bladed it one time this year and the rest of the time we had to take the skid loader out there because it blew so much that. We did, you just couldn't get through it with the truck, you know?
Wouldn't be a problem, would it? I mean, with, if you did take a. Tractor and a blower out there. Of uh, hitting any stones with there? I mean, would we have a problem with that or not?
That's what, yeah, I mean, that's why I say we'd probably wanna go out there and mark it out pretty good. Yeah, you can hit them.
Yeah.
Believe me, I know.
Alright, what else you got there, Steve? Anything?
I think that's about it.
Alright, so uh, we'll just have to look into. Be interested in blowing that out and.
I mean, there's a lot of farmers around with smaller blowers, I'm. I can check into it and see what, see what we can find, so.
Yeah, just see how much uh. You know what, they're gonna charge to do something like that, you know?
Right.
So.
And I, I don't know. I mean. You're gonna be blowing it on tombstones and stuff, is that an issue or? Somebody gonna get crazy about that or?
Well, there ain't much you can do. You gotta blow it, it's, you know, that's the thing. You know, I just don't want it to be that it's, you know. You know, they get off the road or whatever and they can't make the corners or whatever if their machine won't. You know, stones or whatever, but I, I mean, as far as uh. Blowing the snow, you gotta blow where you can blow it sometimes, you know?
Right. Yep. I mean, all the way around the outside, you can blow it out in the fields.
Right.
North, south roads that.
Yeah, the ones in the center, I don't know else you do.
Very.
So.
Yeah.
Alright, anybody else have anything for Steve?
So we, we did talk about that sewer generator too, and I haven't got any prices on that or anything yet, so. We talked about it at the last meeting and kinda talked about it at the budget meeting also, so.
Okay, you got your shelves up yet? Your racks up?
We don't have them up, no.
No, just haven't had the time to do it, have we? Alright, anybody else got anything for Steve? Alright, well, nobody has anything? Thanks, Steve.
Yep, if you guys are okay, I'm gonna leave here because I gotta go out and move a little snow yet, so.
Well, I see you, when I, when I came in, you were still moving down the downtown area, you cleaning down.
I'm talking about home now.
You get the downtown?
No, we just, we got a lot of it done, but. Too many cars and.
Yeah.
So we just quit, well, we're gonna go in a little early in the morning and get it done, so.
Yeah, I talked to Will earlier there and that's what I said probably is after it, no, no cars there, so.
Very.
Well, before you go, I know on behalf of the business owners myself, and I've heard others talking, you guys are doing a wonderful job downtown. It's been great this winter.
Thanks, Kyle.
Alright, anything else for Steve? Alright, Steve. You got something, Ron?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if, if that gets blowed in out there really bad again, like. Uh, give me a call, we'll see, maybe I can blow it out with my blower. It gets real bad again. Alright. Okay. Hopefully, hopefully winter's about over, Ron. Right. I know, it's like you say, buying something, I hesitated when I bought my snow blower. I haven't used it for three years. It's the first year I've used it in three years, so. Uh, uh, it still works, but that's just the way it is, like you say, it's one of them years. It's an insurance policy, kinda. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Alright, thanks, Steve.
You bet.
Alright, now we'll move on to discussion with city clerk Deb Minor, present the financial reports.
All the financial reports are there on the desk for you to look at and um, sign in date, Steve, in there. Um, you know, I've been working on the budget, so I'm gonna have to change the details on the budget. So all of your budgets that got sent to you, you're gonna need to add ten thousand dollars on the expenditures. To cover for that main street, so otherwise that budget will look just like the one I sent to you. Um. We've got two more bills to add to the bills list. Um, the fire department brought these two bills in, one's for apparatus testing service. For their annual fire pump certification, that is five hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-five cents. And the other is a reimbursement for Ben Chapman. He purchased um. Gloves for the fire department and that's four hundred forty-two dollars, seventy-seven cents.
Okay. And is that all you've got, Deb, then?
I think so.
Okay. Then we have to have the uh, approval of the bills. Everybody get a chance to look at all the bills and.
I can motion for the bills, this is Levi.
Okay, and a second?
Jim, second.
And Jim, second, okay, and Bart?
Hi.
Rod?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
And Levi?
Hi.
Yeah, so approval to pay the bills. And uh, then we have the correspondence and communications with Cedar County Solid Waste Commission. The meeting agenda minute, minutes, the budget worksheets and plans for repairs. Or replacement of fire damaged building, so. I went to a meeting over there with the uh. Solid waste. And uh, they're gonna go ahead and build the new. Um, transfer station. They're gonna have two separate buildings. One is gonna be for the. They're gonna add a bay on and they're gonna have three uh. Three bays for their uh, garbage. And then they're gonna have a separate building where um, they do all their paperwork and stuff. They're not gonna be connected like they are now, so. And they went ahead and uh, approved to uh. Go ahead with that project, so. But uh, that's all I've got on that. And uh, Deb, you can explain this. We got the EMC. Insurance Safety Group Benefit Dividend that we received a dividend, is that right?
So this is um, the excess premiums are returned to the members. Based on the overall results experienced by the program, and that's the safety group. Um, that our insurance company is involved in, and our dividend this year was three thousand one hundred ninety-two dollars and seventy-seven cents. Um, Bob Niermeyer said that next year we should not expect a big dividend. Because of all of the losses that have occurred this year with all the cities that EMC covers.
Okay. And then the only other thing we got here is Cedar Rapids photocopy, the rate adjustment, and that's on your copier. Printer in here. Um, it's going from twenty dollars to forty dollars a month and that covers. Everything, right, Deb?
Yes, and I asked them, you know, why it had gone up and they sent me an email that said. We've experienced additional cost of obtaining parts and increased shipping costs with the older devices. Our device is considered to be old, we've had it since twenty fourteen. So, um, I think it's still working very well. I mean. We haven't had any problems with it in quite some time, so. Um, we figured out that's an additional two hundred and forty dollars a year that we'll have to pay for that copy machine.
Okay, do we need a, do a motion or anything on the correspondence and communications, Deb, or not?
No, no.
Okay, and any, uh, let's see, we got new business approval. Resolution for maximum levy for bet budget certification of taxes. So we uh.
Or the um thing that we had the hearing on, you know, it's a resolution that. Just says that um the council has considered that and that they're setting the levy and that the maximum levy is that. Two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars. And that it does not represent an increase of greater than one hundred and two percent. From our maximum property tax request from last year.
All right, do we have to make a motion on that, Deb?
Yes.
All right, we need a motion to uh.
Approve the resolution.
We've approved the resolution for maximum levy. For budget. Motion by Rod?
Jim, second.
Jim's second. And let's see, we'll have to take a little vote here. Bart?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Rod?
Hi.
Levi?
Hi.
And Jim?
Hi.
All right. Okay, what else we got here? Uh. Got to open the bids for the uh two thousand one flatbed trailer.
First, we need to have the council receives and adopts the final budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, so, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, council season adopts the fu- final proposed budget and orders notice a public hearing. For March eighth meeting, budget was emailed to all council members. So uh.
I'll, I'll make the motion with the addition of the ten thousand.
All right, and second?
Yeah.
Second by Rod, okay, so. We will approve the budget. At the uh. March eighth meeting with the addition of the ten thousand dollars.
We need a vote? Real call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah?
Bart?
Hi.
Rod?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Levi?
Hi.
And Jim?
Hi.
Okay, and then we have to open the bids for the sale of the two thousand one flatbed trailer, which is our. Old recycle trailer. Is that in this? Where is that? Is that here?
We only have one bid. I have it in here.
You have, okay.
Yeah, we only got one bid. And the bid is from Tony Wagner from Stanwood, and the bid is for one thousand six hundred dollars.
What's everybody's feelings on that? Is that? Acceptable or uh? Do we want to uh not accept it?
Uh, Jim, I don't know. I. It'd have to be somebody that knows something more about it than what I do.
I think that's a little too cheap, to tell you the truth, Steve.
Do you really? It's a two thousand? What, what do you think it's worth, Rod?
I'll bet it's worth twenty-two to twenty-five, probably.
Anybody else have any feelings on this?
I'll take Rod's words for it, that it seemed, it seemed a little low, pretty big trailer.
So what, do we want to reject the bid uh from Tony Wagner? Is that what we want to do?
I would say we should, Steve.
Okay, how about you, Ronnie, Bart? You guys have any, any ideas on this?
That seems a little low. You know, maybe we should reopen, can we reopen the bids again and?
Yes.
Okay.
So what you want to do? You want to do it again until next month's meeting?
Yes, let's do that. Until the next month's meeting, we'll reject the bid, current bid of uh sixteen hundred from Tony.
That's a twenty-six footer, right, Steve?
Uh, is, is that what we listed it at or do we list, was it twenty-four or twenty-six? What was that, Deb? Do you remember?
I wanna see if I have that back here. Um. It says approximately twenty-six feet by seven feet with a two. And five sixteenths inch ball. Comes with tarp, brakes are fairly new, wheel bearings have been redone recently, and tires are in good condition.
Yeah, I know the brakes and wheel bearings and tires are in really good shape because they just did them. I think uh Steve did them the last summer. So. We want to, uh, do we have to make a motion on that or anything to reject a bid or how do we do?
I think it would be a good idea to make a motion, yes.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion to reject the bid of sixteen hundred?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by. We have a second?
This Levi will second.
All right. Uh, so we'll go to a roll call vote. Bart?
Hi.
Rod?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Levi?
Hi.
And Jim?
Hi.
So we will put that on the agenda. We will re-advertise, is that right, Deb? We'll re-advertise and put it on next month's agenda?
Yes.
Is that how you want to do it?
Yep.
Uh, let's see, what else got here? Uh, All-Star turf changed. To continuous contract will provide services year to year until we cancel services. So instead of renewing our contract with them every year, it would just um. Be a standing contract until we decide to get out of it, is that right, Deb?
Yes.
Okay, do we want to uh approve that or do we? What's the council's feelings on that? They just, I mean, it'll just renew every year, but. Um, on the, if there was a price change on that, Deb, will they let us know? I mean, you know, I mean uh. We don't want to get caught and just say, yeah, just go ahead and renew it, and we don't, so if there's a price change, I'm sure we'll be notified, right?
Yeah, it doesn't mention anything about that on here, but I would assume so.
We, we would assume, I hope, hopefully. Hopefully we'd be notified, you know?
Do you want me to look into that and we can put this off until next month?
Yeah, we could do that because we're not need to. Do any uh. Anything for a while on that, so why don't we just table that till the next meeting then, Deb, and?
Yes.
Understand terms of, of canceling, if there's a certain notice that's gotta be given or if we can cancel like anytime.
Now, that, that's my question. I gue- I guess it's, you know, when you're talking about a contract, that's something we need Kyle involved with.
Yeah, I haven't seen the contract, but it should have terms included in it for our ability to cancel and how much notice we'd have to provide, and I. I guess I don't know how detailed the contract is.
It's not very detailed, but I will send that to you tomorrow, Kyle, so you can look it over. And then we can figure out what questions we need to ask them.
Okay. All right, so we'll table that until uh the March meeting. And uh. Let's see, we got approval of resolution for pay for a library director, Nikki. So does anybody make a motion that we uh go ahead and pay Nikki Shield? Um, it was decided by the library board to pay her fifteen fifty an hour.
I bet it.
Rod makes a mo-
Okay, Jim, I've got a question. Is that for this budget that we're in or is it for July like all the other part-time?
No, the library board would like it to become effective immediately.
Really? That's, that it doesn't go at the next, at the next fiscal period, huh?
That's what the library board wants.
Okay, okay.
Well, I. I, I just, I don't think that's fair to the other part-time employees. That's, that's all I'm gonna say on that.
So technically, the way the library works is that. We don't actually have any say over their pay beyond the approval of the overall budget, so we can discount their budget, but. I think, would we have to make a budget amendment for this year, Deb, for this, or since we didn't have a, a person for a while, are, are they within budget?
No, I, they, they will still be within their budget, I believe.
Uh, Levi, but who gives them the money? Isn't it this city that?
Yeah, we give them the money. The reason I bring that up is we got into kind of a, got a little sideways with the library board before because we didn't take their recommendation on. The uh salary, and then we read the bylaws and the bylaws state that the library board themselves get to make the salary. We did, we though get to approve the budget, so. I don't think we can line item go in and say we disapprove this piece of it. We can only uh disapprove the budget overall. I believe that's how it works.
Well, they are staying within their budget so that it's up to them if they decide with the board, with their board. To pay them whatever they want, basically, right? As long as they stay within their budget.
I, I, I think so. Like I say, I just know that it's probably been five years ago we got pretty sideways with them over, over a decision we made as a council and. We found out that we didn't actually have that authority.
Okay, so then. Do we want to approve the resolution to pay for library director Nikki Shield then or, or not? Do I have a motion and a second or? We had a motion that.
How does that work, the, the resolution to, to pay her if it's in their budget?
Well, the, the council has to pass a resolution for pay before anybody can get paid by the city. Because she does get paid by the city. It's kind of a technicality.
I, I don't know. Do you remember that, Deb, when we got sideways on the library board?
I know that I've heard stories. I think maybe I blocked that out of my memory. And to do pleasant things, but yes.
Well, this, Jim, if, if, you know, if that's the way it is, that's the way it is, but. I still don't think it's fair for the other part-time employees.
Well. If they uh. They have their budget to work with, I guess they can. Decide what they want to pay and. That we don't want to, like Levi says, we don't want to get sideways with them again and. Not that. You know. You can question it or whatever, but. Do we want to uh? Make a motion then to approve the resolution or not?
If, if they stay within their budget, then I say we, we, we would make a motion. If we'd have to amend the budget, then I, then I think we, we revisit it, so. I would make a motion as long as they stay within their budget. I don't know if that's a, if a week, if I can do that with the condition statement around it, but it feels like. That would be what we do.
I know what you're saying. Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion by. Levi. Do we have a second?
It's Rod, I'll second it.
And second by Rod, okay? So we uh approve the uh. Resolution for pay for a library director Nikki Shield. And uh. Right, Bo- Bart?
Hi.
Rod? Ronnie?
Hi.
Levi?
Hi.
And Jim? All right, all right. So that uh resolution for the pay carries for Nikki Shield. Uh, we have council persons concerns. Anybody have any concerns tonight they want to talk about?
Well, I, I wanna just make a thank you to Sheriff Wellington and the sheriff's office for cooperating with Rick. That, that goes a long ways to help us out down here. Uh, my only concern is I, I would respectfully request that come next budget. We have our next budget hearing that all department heads should be there. So that we have no miscommunication or what people's responsibilities are. We. Uh, we, we had the analyst director there this last budget. Year, and my hat goes off to her for being there and I, I just. I think that would go a long way to get rid of any rumors or anything else. I think it's the proper way of doing things.
So you'd have somebody here from each department as far as uh whether it be. Library, park. Every, every department then should have a representative is what you're saying. Okay. Anybody else?
I, I have something. Um, we talked about some at the very end of last meeting. And I don't know if we need to start doing something about that. Is that, is that something that we're, we're ready to talk about in a more open forum? Ie, should we start considering finding a person to, to take that role? Okay, so it sounds like I, I got a nod, so based on what was discussed, should we, should we start looking for a person to, to. Uh, replace our retiring city clerk so that there's some overlap on duties? Like get a rec out there now so we can get someone higher in the next few months so they can overlap as much as possible.
Well, the only thing we know for sure. Is the thirty-first of December, Deb will be done, and she could be done before that. And Deb and I have um talked about this, and Deb, you can. Um. You can chime in here anytime, but um we've talked too and it's gonna take. Some time to do the hiring process. It's gonna take time for. Somebody to learn from Deb, so I'm along with you there, Levi. I don't know if we uh. Want to set a time, you know, as far as um. When we would, uh, when we would do some hiring.
I, I'd like to have interviews in March if we possibly can, which gives us a time to put the rec out now, create the rec, and then. By March, we're doing interviews, so hopefully by an April, May-ish timeframe, we have someone on board, so we get at least six months of overlap. So I don't know why we wouldn't get a, get something.
I'm with you on that.
We can.
Same thing. You know, and then if uh you uh. We put it in and we don't get any candidates, we don't have to do anything in March, but at least we've got it out there, right?
Yeah, I agree. I, I think it's something, we, we know it's coming, you know, she gave us pl- plenty of good notice and I think we should take advantage of that.
I think you're right. It's a good call, Levi. Anybody else?
I agree with Levi.
Steve, I got a question.
Yeah, Rod.
Why were you saying that she might be done sooner than that?
She just told us. December thirty-first, she would be gone, so.
And um Jim had mentioned that I have a lot of um vacation and sick days. That, you know, would add up to maybe a couple of months. So possibly, you know, depending on how it works out, if the person. That's hired is doing a good job, you know, and getting trained adequately. Then I would maybe be able to. That's what Steve and I had talked about.
Well, see, and the thing is too, Rod, if you look at this. Um, she has vacation uh ti- time between now and July first. July first, her vacation time starts over in the fiscal. She's got, you know, what, four weeks? Is that what you get, Deb? Three weeks, four weeks? So many hours, anyway, whatever it is, hours. And so you've got that time. And so you've got that time that from July first to the end of the year, you're gonna use up, plus your sick time.
You you don't get paid for your sick time.
Are you sure?
You have to be sick to use it. It's not vacation. It's not paid time off.
Okay, um. Did we not work with Paul on that a little bit?
That was set up before that the council was involved in it and did she say anything to anybody on the council?
So what you're saying there, uh Rod, you you just lose it. Is that what you're saying?
That's not vacation time.
No, it's not.
Correct?
Well. Yes, it is sick time. It's not vacation time. I agree with you there. But I don't know whether you pay it though, if you like, if you wouldn't use it, do you get paid for it?
Whenever you leave a job, Levi will know this for sure the same way. Whenever you leave, get fired, terminated, you do not get paid for sick time.
Fired or terminated would be a different deal though, Rod.
You're exactly right, but you don't get paid for sick time when you're gonna use it as vacation time.
I don't know.
What does the handbook say?
I don't know, we'd have to look at the handbook and see if there's anything in there.
Deb, what's it saying?
Um, I don't have it memorized, but we can sure look into it tomorrow, Rod, and get back to you.
That would be good.
All right, anybody else have any uh concerns? All right, if not, I will uh entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion Levi.
No, go ahead.
Okay, Ron.
All right, we gotta do a roll call on that. Bart?
Hi.
Rod?
Hi.
We lose you there Ronnie?
Yeah, you're a bad. Yeah.
And Levi?
Hi.
And Jim?
Hi.
All right, with that, meeting adjourned.